A regular meeting of this school board is called to order. It is Monday, August 6th at 6:35 PM. All board members are present this evening. Please rise for the flag salute. Don, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There have been no revisions to the agenda this evening. Is there any objections to approving? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. We do not have any awards or recognitions this evening. Are there any announcements? Seeing none, we are going to move straight into public comment. You'll notice a little bit different setup this evening. We do have two different spots for public comment. We have a podium to the left and podium to the right. You can choose either one. And the first person we have signed up this evening is Mr. Niall Morris. Niall, are you here? And the second person is Grace Merritt. And Grace, if you're here, and if you'd like, you can proceed forward to this podium over here. And Niall, we do have a three-minute limit at the -- this is a little bit new system, but it will, I believe, beep when your time is up.
Okay, I don't think I have about three minutes. I'm aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, my name is Niall Morris, and I am here on behalf of the Boxed Meal Contract. I actually attended a Title I school in Mountain View called William Tyson. And while I was there for that short time, I participated heavily in all of the after-school programs that were offered. And because of it, I went on to graduate from high school with my diploma, and I'm currently attending UAA. But while I was there, the role models that I was able to learn from and the structured system really helped me develop skills. It helped me build self-confidence and really just instilled all-around educational value because they were offered. And without programs like the Boxed Meal Contract, I mean, those sort of programs that are offered in schools wouldn't really be appealing to students because there wouldn't really be, I mean, besides, I feel like they would just be less needed. But it is statistically proven that students that are hungry perform not as well as students that are not hungry on tests. And they're more likely to join gangs and get into violence if they're not offered programs in schools. And I feel like these programs are not adding to a sense of self-entitlement. I feel like they're fostering a sense of community inside and outside of schools. And I mean, if anything, one of the most important things that taxpayer dollars can be going towards is making sure that children meet their nutritional needs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Grace Merritt, are you here? The next person signed up is Mr. Dan Loring. And after Dan, we have David Neese.
President, guess, this is quite a -- or, Maggie, this is quite a bit different than last year, and I didn't see any press releases or information that this year it's different. So, if you could just kind of indulge me, is this on non-agenda items, or are we now testifying on non-agenda items and agenda items?
Good question. And I was gonna kind of go over that later on this evening. We are having one public comment period for agenda items and non-agenda items. We will be taking public comment, no matter what it's in regards to, on a first-come, first-served basis, and we will be taking all of that during this, at this point in the agenda.
So, in previous years, the boards had granted three minutes before a meeting to talk about non-agenda items, and then up to three minutes for agenda items. So, you could speak, you know, multiple times on multiple issues for more than three minutes. But now, I guess, the board has changed policy and is only giving a citizen or a parent or someone like to speak three minutes total?
No, you can, I see that you're signed up to speak on some different things, but that's fine. Go ahead and do that. We're not separating it out any longer versus an agenda item and a non-agenda item.
I see. Okay, I think I signed up first to talk about the box lunches.
So, I will give you, you got that? Okay. So, I'm gonna start you on three minutes you have for box lunches.
Okay, thank you. I would encourage the board to vote unanimously to support the box lunch program. I did hear a press release, or I understood there's a press release and saw Board Member Don Smith testify that he is in opposition to the box lunch program because he wants to lower the national deficit. And I think the voters in Anchorage elected Mr. Smith, as well as the school board members, to support kids, to help kids, not to decrease the national deficit. When public schools were started 100 years ago, there were entitlements. Entitlements for anybody that was not basically white. Okay? Eighth grade education was considered a pretty good education. Well, thank God, over the years, we now want to educate all kids. That's not entitlement programs. Box lunches are not entitlement programs. The same Mr. Smith earlier testified that he wanted, he had a problem with this transportation for homeless kids. He wanted to give the money back to the federal government, violate federal law, and challenge them. Well, thank you very much for not agreeing with Mr. Smith's lead in passing a resolution to not provide transportation for homeless kids. It's appalling. It's absolutely appalling. The same Mr. Smith is on record not supporting immigration in this neighborhood, in this community. The same Mr. Smith has joked about homeless kids. It's appalling. Now he's proud to put out a press release to say that we don't want to feed kids that come to school hungry. Florida, New York, Des Moines, it's in all the papers around the country, and it makes this district look ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loring. Did you want to comment on your next item?
I could. And I will.
Mr. Neese, are you in the audi -- okay, all right.
I believe my next item, let me recall, is, and I haven't started yet, but nevertheless, is my next item on my, in my request for public testimony concerning the multicultural supervisor position that was cut at South last year?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I'll make this very short. It is my belief, as someone who's attended school board meetings for, on and off, for seven years, someone that up until June 30th of this year has been on the Multicultural Education Advisory Committee and currently is on the Special Education Advisory Committee, it is my belief, as a citizen, as a parent, that the Anchorage School Board willfully violated policy and state law by discriminating against Anchorage School District students, you know, by cutting that position at South. And I just wanted the public, as well as school board, to understand that as we speak, there's a complaint being drafted and will be filed shortly against the district for discriminatory practices. Thank you.
And your last item?
My last item?
MECAK?
My last item, MECAK, Multicultural Education Advisory Committee. I hold that committee dear to my heart because I believe that committee could help the district, the community, parents, and most of all, kids succeed. Over the last six years, seven years, the achievement gap between Caucasian kids and non-Caucasian kids has grown. Hasn't decreased, it's got worse. Proficiency in the district for all kids has gotten worse over the last seven years. Not better, worse, in a state and in a district that has some of the lowest standards in the country. I believe parent outreach, parent involvement, community involvement is one piece of the puzzle that we have not utilized very effectively. And I think it's will. I hear the district, I hear the school board talk about how important parent involvement is, and then I see the action. Seven years I've watched, seven years I've participated, seven years I've seen a district that does not perform as well as they could. And I think it's intentional. When the Multicultural Education Advisory Committee did what they were supposed to do, it is also my belief that the Anchorage School Board, in a concerted effort over the last year and a half, took away the voice of the only advisory committee in the district. There is also a complaint being processed against the Anchorage School Board for violating school board policy and for violating the rights of the community and the parents to participate. The Multicultural Education Advisory Committee is a committee that's 38 years old, and in a year and a half, in my opinion, this board has eliminated their voice intentionally in collaboration. And I believe that has violated the policy of the Anchorage School District as well as various laws. And so, there will also be a complaint filed shortly with those allegations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Neese?
Yeah, hi. My name is David Neese. I'm sorry not all dressed up, I was smoking fish, and I read Don's article in the Dispatch and decided I need to come in and have a free bit to say about it. What I understood is that what the board is considering is a half a million dollar federally-funded grant to provide after-school box lunches on a grab-and-go basis. We're not talking about before school, we're not talking about school lunches, we're not talking about free and reduced lunches. We're talking about, kid's hungry, you can go grab a box lunch and head out the door. And I'm going, okay, on the surface, that doesn't sound bad, but I'm kind of looking at it, I'm going like, okay, so, it's free, which means that is the delivery to the school from whoever the vendor is free, or are people transporting it? Has anybody looked at the nutritional analysis of it? I know my personal physician's been in here, J.C. Cates, to talk to you guys about your nutritional analysis on your foods, packaged foods. When I see kids coming to school when I was teaching, and they had a lunch bowl, I said, flip that sucker over, look at the salt content, thousand milligrams. That's more than a Big Mac. Have you guys done the nutritional analysis? I looked at the things that you've got on there. I mean, it's cheese sticks and turkey sandwiches and long-life milk. Long-life milk, you don't have to refrigerate it. All those things concern me. I think the thing that, I read Mr. Smith's article, I went back and read the bid, I went back and read the comment from the administration that, yeah, we should be doing this, is why are we doing this? Is the intent to just be able to get kids free food? I used to have a box on my desk at school, hey, you're hungry, here's a granola bar. Okay? Teachers do that because that's what we do. I'm just wondering why the board has chosen to accept this grant? Do we get a fair, break-even deal on it? It's only half a million dollars, and it's only half a million dollars next year, and it's only half a million dollars at that. When the federal money goes away, does it go away? Or are we expected to cough up the next half million dollars in perpetuity for a program that allows a child to grab a lunch and walk out of school with it? School's over. Are you gonna provide free lunches for your kids that are participating in an hour and a half of activities after school in a sport? My kids never had, when I coached for 28 years, my kids never had a district provided after-school food nutritional supplement. So, are these kids all participating in after-school thing, and do they need the additional food? You guys need to take a good look at it and decide, are you giving them good, healthy food? Why are you giving them good, healthy food? And why are we taking the free money? There's no such thing as a free lunch, Robert Heinlein's favorite saying. You're buying into something.
Thank you, David. Are there items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
ASD memorandum number 14, or number four, memorandum 14?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Item seven?
Item seven.
Number nine, Madam Chair?
Item three? Okay, is there a motion to? We've pulled item three, memorandum number nine, item four, memorandum number 14, and item seven, memorandum 19. Three, four, and seven.
Okay. I move that we approve ASD memorandum number one, 2012 Charitable Giving Campaign. ASD -- I'm sorry. I move that we approve the minutes of the early meeting, June 11th, 2012, special meeting, June 11th, 2012, regular meeting, June 2011, 2012, and early meeting, June 25th, 2012. ASD memorandum number one, 2012, Charitable Giving Campaign, ASD memorandum, Alaska Department of Education and Early Development, FY 2014? That's pulled. I'm so sorry. Number five? I don't, see, I'm missing any of these items on my agenda. Item five, ASD memorandum number 18, Acceptance of a Grant Award, McLaughlin FIA Youth Program Grant. Item six is ASD memorandum number eight, Revision of Grant Award, Education Jobs Fund. ASD, no, that's, and number eight, ASD memorandum number four, Personnel Report.
And that has addenda? With addenda. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Isn't it mine? And the consent agenda passes by unanimous consent. So, first up is ASD memorandum number nine, the Alaska Department of Education, Early Development, FY 2014 Grant Applications. Tam, would you like to move that item?
Yes, the question I have, and it relates to our early meeting too, is was this vetted through the facilities condition index?
I'm sorry, Tam, you have to make a motion to approve this, so.
I move that we approve the ASD, administration's recommendation for the State of Alaska Department of Education and Early Development, DED, grant by September 1st, 2012, for the FY 2014 Capital Improvement Project Grants Program. The total of all grants is $6 million.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, I just want some clarification from the administration on if this was, if the facilities index, conditions index, our new indexes that were, or indices that we're coming up with, has this been vetted through that process?
Madam President, the answer's partially. The primary criteria that was used to select these projects for state grant applications was the likelihood that they would succeed in the state ranking process. The state has a very specific criteria that it uses to evaluate grant applications. It incorporates many variables that are not the same variables that we use here in prioritizing our projects, and our experience over the years has been that certain types of projects score better than others. So, these are the three, the three grants that the administration's recommending that we submit this year represent high-value projects from the school district's point of view, but are also ones that we believe would score well on the state system. And although we have the opportunity to submit seven more grant applications, could submit as many as 10, we don't believe that the effort required to build those applications would be worth it in light of the unlikelihood that they would be scored high enough to ever be funded. So, the Bear Valley roof, Bear Valley has not had an FCI evaluation completed yet, but that roof is in a partial failure condition due to the wind storms last winter, and it will be recommended for replacement either as a result of a state grant or potentially bond funding later this year, or in 2013, for roof replacement in 2013. And because of its emergent condition and because of the fact that we understand, we have good design information on that, we believe that will score well on the, in the Department of Education and Early Development process. Similarly, the fire alarm upgrades and the communication upgrades, those would be expected to pay for projects at 10 to 12 schools, depending on what the final costs come out to be for each of them. And these are, again, projects that tend to score very well on the DED ranking process. They are ones that will improve the FCIs in their buildings, but they may not necessarily be at the buildings with the highest FCIs. Fire alarms and communication systems are projects that we will recommend for funding, even if their building isn't in a particularly bad condition. That's a, obviously, those are two very important systems to school safety and school operations. And so, we might well recommend investment in those improvements, even if the entire building doesn't have a particularly high FCI. So, the short answer is, it's kind of a blend of the two. We're trying to maximize, minimize our effort in building grants that, and limit them to the grants that we expect to be successful. And that's the, in general, how we selected these three grant applications.
And so, would we receive in the future the FCIs in the different buildings, will there be highlights on, the score is not high on this building, but here are some issues in terms of safety and security? I mean, are those gonna be highlighted? Is that gonna be obvious? Maybe it has a really low score, and we have a tendency to overlook that. Are those things gonna be highlighted for us?
Each FCI is made up of individual components. An FCI of .3 is considered pretty high. And that .3 is made up of maybe a dozen or more individual projects that have been identified. And one project might be .05, and another one might be .01, and they all add up to the .3. So, we can provide the board with the individual component pieces associated with each school's complete condition index. And then, from time to time, we will bring you requests for funding emergent projects that should supersede the normal use of the FCIs.
Right. Could those that are specifically safety and security be highlighted, maybe bolded or something?
Sure.
And then, I certainly understand that, you know, if a roof caves in, we didn't plan for that, hopefully.
What I was gonna mention also inside of that is, any life safety issue, the state will look much more favorably on than other things that maybe they think the district and the community ought to take on. So, life safety issues especially are things that would get their attention, and roof repair.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
Follow-up to that, I know we put together that list. We talked before about energy efficiency type of grants that are out there right now, and I'm not sure what we put in there. But on your list, are you taking that into account, trying to zero, trying to identify those that are, because they're qualified for, you know, reimbursement based upon savings? Is there any movement in that regard, and do you separate that in with your facility index?
Madam President, Mr. Higgins, yes. We are making progress on taking advantage of the state energy loan programs. We've developed projects using the energy audits that the state paid for. They completed those in the, in the spring and early summer. We've now compiled that data, and we'll be presenting that to AHFC for their consideration on potential funding options. And then, we'll be talking to you about what that means in terms of access to capital. In general, though, those are not necessarily FCI, the buildings where we could see, achieve the most energy savings aren't necessarily the ones with the highest FCIs. And that program is designed specifically to target energy savings and projects that pay themselves off relatively quickly. So, that decision-making process will be somewhat different. There may be some, I'll call it serendipitous, improvements in the FCIs along with that because clearly, to the extent that we're replacing windows or working inside the building envelope or the heating and, heating and vetting systems, to the extent that the FCI process measures those, we'll get benefit from that. But we're not necessarily targeting the high FCI buildings.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. Memorandum number nine passes by unanimous consent. The next item is memorandum number 14. Ms. Plunkett, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the school board approve and authorize the superintendent to notify the municipality of Anchorage Heritage Land Bank of the district's desire to relinquish management authority to the 15-acre school site located at 92nd and Arctic Boulevard. management authority to the 15-acre school site located at 92nd and Arctic Boulevard.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Plunkett, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity for all the questions that I did ask in terms of, just for the public, that we didn't pay anything for, for the land, and that it's considered wetlands. But, and then also looking at the capacity of, of buildings near, and charter school aspects. But, the more I thought about it, I did kind of want to just ask if a charter school did want to look at it, kind of what our status was with the white paper we're looking at regarding charter schools in general, and if it's something we would want to wait on. And is the whole site wetlands, or is there a portion that is versus not? I mean, I couldn't get that from the picture, and then from looking at the municipality, so wanted to ask more information.
Madam President, Ms. Plunkett, there's very little of the site that is not either Class A, B, or C wetlands. Doesn't mean it's not developable, just means it'd be very expensive, and it would have a pretty rigorous permitting process, and probably, there'd be certainly significant limitations on the style of development that would be possible on that site. We have not done any specific cost estimates for what it would cost, but it would clearly be in the millions of dollars to, to either excavate the peat, or to construct in such a way that the peat wasn't, that you could leave the peat in place. That, as opposed to something like the, what we've been calling the totem site, where there's essentially zero cost associated with the soil conditions and the general building charact, or the general characteristics of the site. So, it, in talking to our facility staff and, and the municipality, I don't think anybody contemplates that it's likely that site will ever, well, in the foreseeable future, will ever support a structure. It would be the muni's intention to use the site as a snow dump, which they believe they could, they could use in that part of the world. They're a little gun-shy about.
They could use it also.
Yeah, and, and the, the, we have been granted access to the municipality's snow sites over the years, and so, we have an interest in the municipality having a robust and geographically diverse set of snow dumps, because we would want to move our snow there as well, off of our schools.
So, follow-up question, would we put that in as a part of the memorandum, potentially giving it back, that with the anticipation that we would continue to want to use their snow dump facilities for free as we have in the past?
We can, absolutely.
Absolutely. I think it's a good caution.
Tam?
Yes, I just wanted to know if there had been any, any discussion of swapping this piece of land, which they have a potential value for, for another piece of land in another part of Anchorage that we might need?
The, we did discuss that with the municipality. We didn't discuss swaps with private landowners. The municipality feels that the value of this property for development purposes is at or close to zero. The, its highest and best value for use other than a, than something that would tolerate the wetlands classification like a snow dump, would be to use it, put it into some sort of preservation status, and to get wetlands development credits for it. So, that would be its, its sort of maximum use, and we have not priced out the, sort of the value of those credits at this point. Historically, the district has not been in the credit business, and I, I don't know whether the muni would be crazy, crazy about us getting into the credit business and essentially competing with them for that. And, and to do that, we, the quid pro quo is, you'd have to lock the land up in some sort of non-development status, and that would then give somebody else the right to develop their wetlands somewhere else. They would pay you to promise not to develop your own land. So, we would essentially have to, the traditional style in the muni process is to create a park, and then that satisfies the non-development commitment. And, so we would have to, to put it in that sort of non-development status in order to capture what little value there is in the land right now. So, at this point, short answer is, we do not believe there's significant land exchange value in the site as it now exists.
And just historically, how often have we ever swapped parcels of land?
I couldn't speak to swapping. Nobody can recall the last time that we relinquished management authority for a parcel, that, that we had been granted management authority for. It may have happened, but it certainly is not a common practice. It's relatively unusual. Almost, well, certainly all of the other undeveloped land in the district portfolio right now is eminently developable, in fact, was selected or purchased by the district with a specific type and location of school in mind. That was not the case with the 92nd and Arctic site. It was part of a municipal entitlement. It was transferred to the district many, many years ago, and has never been seriously considered for a school site. Even though schools have been necessary in the area, and have been developed in that part of Midtown South, Southwest Anchorage area, the development costs associated with this site have made it unattractive every time it's been evaluated as a potential site.
Usable property for us is just approximately 15 acres anyway, and that, that minimizes what we could use the land for. If it were, if we could walk in there tomorrow, it still reduces some of the, our ability to utilize the property.
Mr. Higgins?
Just refresh that mic. I think a couple of years ago, we had some little piece of land next to a school, and I thought it was Eagle River that we gave back to the muni, because it made more sense for them to have it park-wise and everything else, and for us to administer it. So, it's not, this isn't unusual, since I've been on the board as well.
That, that's correct. There was a, there's a portion of a, of the Eagle River Elementary campus or school site that we did relinquish management authority on. You're absolutely right.
Anything further from board members? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes seven to zero. Next item is memorandum number 19. Mr. Smith, would you please make a motion?
Madam, Madam President, reluctantly, I'll move to adopt ASD memorandum number 19, Award of Contract for Boxed Meals.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Madam President, I've got a whole lot of stuff here I want to talk about on this issue, and I apologize in advance for probably taking a lot of your time, but I think this is an important issue that needs to have some discussion. For the record, I'm not opposed to poor kids. I, I don't want to see anybody go to school starving, and all of the allegations have been made against me. But I would like, number one, I'd like to refer to this, this memorandum as the taxpayer-subsidized meal plan, because there's no such thing as a free meal. And I, I'm concerned because, and I've got a number of questions for staff, but before I start questions, I would like to comment on the, the number of people in Anchorage, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, and I have, if you want to pass these two sheets down, and I've got some for administration if they want to look at them. But essentially, out of the top, 2009 family poverty rates, U.S. cities over 250,000. Anchorage is third from the bottom with 5.3% poverty rate. The other sheet is essentially the same information. It shows household families and per capita income, and individuals and families below poverty level by city of 2009. And this is an alphabetic listing that's coming around, and Anchorage is third from the top, but we're still, you know, on the very bottom. 5.3% of, of families below the poverty level, and 7.6% on individuals. We are not, and I guess one of the concerns I had when I read this was that it appears to me, and that's one of the questions I've got, is just how many individuals, students in our district, are going to be receiving these meals? Because it sounds to me, from the material I've looked at, that we're talking about upwards of 42% of the students enrolled in the school district are eligible for free and reduced meals. Now, whether that's lunches, or, I know the breakfast program isn't the same, and now this sort of dinner program, I'm sure is not the same, but like free and reduced lunches, it's a huge percentage of our student body. And so, that's one of the issues that I, that I want to have a chance to, to ask some questions. Because it doesn't make sense to me, if we've got a 5.7% poverty rate, you know, then maybe we shouldn't be feeding more than 10% of the student population instead of 44 or 42. But I do have a number of questions, and I don't know who you want to answer them.
We'll probably, Mike and I'll handle most of them.
How many, this is going to be in relationship to the size of programs, how many students last year, or on average, were receiving free or reduced lunch?
I believe the percentage, Mr. Smith, is about 44%.
Okay.
Are eligible.
Are eligible.
To receive free or reduced lunches.
Okay, 44 are eligible, and do you have any idea how many actually accept the meals? Is it 40% or?
It's quite a bit less than that. Our participation rate is not as high as our eligibility rate.
Speaking of eligibility rate, am I incorrect by making the statement that, it's my understanding that the program, a family of five, three children and a, and a mother and father, can make upwards of $63,000 to be eligible for the program?
What I would get, what, what I was looking for is the free and reduced lunch rate sheet that says how many family members equals how much the family can make, and do they qualify for free or reduced?
Well, I was told that, that the number is in the range of $63,000 can be earned by a family and be eligible to be in this program.
Here's the sheet.
So, how many members of the family, Mr. Smith?
I'm told that the, the authorization is for three children, you know, and I don't know if it means man and wife, or, or husband and wife, or probably five.
It looks like the annual, for a family of five, to get a free status, there's a reduced status as well, but free status, which I believe is set at 130% of the poverty level that you described earlier. If I'm reading the chart correctly, the annual income for that would be $43,901.
Going with the free.
And then, that's the free, that's to be eligible for free meals. To be eligible for reduced meals, it would be $62,500.
Maybe that's the number then, that I got.
Right.
So, it, different, for a different program?
Well, for free, it's one thing, for reduced, it's another amount.
Reduced means that you only pay a small portion.
Portion of it, I understand. Okay, so that, thank you. Now, the proposed, I call them dinners, but the, the box dinners that, that students are going to be eligible to have, what is the, the anticipated number of students that are going to be reci, receiving that? And I realize it's just starting, so, but have, what number?
Approximately 1,000 a day.
Okay, thank you. What is the process of applying for these programs? Do, do the parents physically come into the principal's office and fill out a piece of paper and ask for the services, or how is it determined?
What occurs at registration, Mr. Smith, our families are given a variety of forms that they fill out, and inside of that is the form for free and reduced lunch. It's filled out, staff then compares the income rate based on the number in the family and the income rate to determine if they qualify for free or reduced.
And is this their, writing a number down?
Yes.
It's not, you don't go out and verify it, or have a income tax return presented?
No, we, we do a random sample, I believe every year, every year, that's required by the state and the federal governments to validate this. And so, we do a, we take a random sample, and we do do that sort of more intensive, I don't want to call it an audit.
Is that the 3% figure I've heard something about?
I, I don't, I, I don't.
I heard the 3%, you couldn't, you couldn't check more than 3% of the eligible families, but you could go up to 3% to verify if the people were qualified?
Right, we verify it, and then if, if too high a percentage of those turn out not to have been truly eligible, then our program is at risk, if you will. And I don't believe we've ever been in that condition.
Now, I was a little bit confused in looking at the memos. We're talking about a $526,000 program for this year, this coming school year. And then, in the article, there's a statement that we're going to make a profit of $200,000 that can go toward costs of the warehouse or of the program. Out of that $526,000, are warehouse costs, handling costs, distribution costs, and serving the, the meals factored into that price?
The, the $500,000 that's in the contract award is simply the cost of buying the boxed meals from the vendor, and the, all the associated food that would be served in this meal. There are, we don't anticipate any significant extra internal operating expenses. We'll use existing employees, existing facilities, existing delivery operations, existing storage for this program.
We're talking about 6,000 cases of food that have got to be stored someplace, got to be then picked up.
This doesn't all come in at one time. This will come in periodically over the course of the year. We have plenty of warehouse space, and plenty of, well, this, these products won't require refrigeration, but we have plenty, plenty of refrigeration space as well. It's frankly, one of the significant challenges of our student nutrition program overall, is we need to put more meals through that program. We need to spread our fixed costs over a larger revenue base in order to improve, be able to invest in food quality and better serving technology, et cetera. So, this will give us a chance to spread our existing costs over a wider meal base.
Right, it just seems strange to me that if you're operating your operation as it is today, and now you're adding on this kind of work, that there's still not going to be any more costs, but.
It's only a little over a 3% increase in the total meal volume for the district annually. So, we, we believe we can absorb this inside the existing department operation.
I had a question regarding audits, I think you may have answered it. You saying that we're doing a 3% check of the recipients every year?
I, I don't know the exact percentage, but we do do the required audit, if you will, of our eligibility determinations.
And so, we basically go off the federal criteria for eligibility, even though we're very, very high in terms of income. I mean, it.
Right, the, the income levels that I described are set in federal law. There is a specific income standard for Alaska. In the, the numbers I was quoting were from the Federal Register.
I think we're 25% above the lower 48 in terms of calculating or something.
Could be. So, yes, we're using the exact ones, that's what we're required to use by the federal government.
Similar question to this, I've been trying to recall in my memory, but I recall over the last year or so, that in certain schools where we're providing lunches and maybe breakfasts, that if it reaches a certain percentage of the student body, we basically let everybody have a free meal. Is that?
That's correct. That's considered, the, the term of art is called a provision school, and there's about 15 of those in the district right now.
Well, obviously, I have a major problem with this, and again, I want to go back and say I'm not, I have no problem trying to take care of children that are, you know, that are in situations beyond their control. I, I just, you know, this taxpayer subsidized meal program, it bothers me in that, and I guess I should make a statement too, so people understand. I was on the Anchorage Assembly from 1975 to 1985, and I started a program. I started a program, after-school childcare. And my concept was, I knew parents that were having just an awful time, they were at work, kids were coming home to an empty house, they were having, getting into trouble, and there was all kinds of things going on. And at that particular time on the Assembly, and I'm guessing it was the early eighties, maybe late seventies, the Assembly was split, six to five, and use the wonderful words, conservative liberal, but the conservative group on the Assembly had six votes, and the other side had five. I was one of the conservative members. I proposed the idea. Well, I didn't get much support from my conservative friends on the Assembly, but I had the support of the other five quote liberal members of the Assembly. And I laid this idea out, I said, you know, I want to have a program where we can test three schools in Anchorage, because I want to see if there isn't a lot of interest in having some kind of supervised activities for children that are going home to an empty house. Oh, they thought that was marvelous, and wanted to get on it right now, so immediately I got hit with this, we don't want to do it in the way you want to do it, we want to do it in three low-income neighborhoods of Anchorage, because that's where the need is. And I said, no, I won't support my own ordinance if you guys don't let us test one low-income neighborhood, one middle-income neighborhood, and one upper-income neighborhood. Well, they reluctantly agreed, and it was started. The thing was a roaring success. I've had parents come to me many, many, many years ago, crying. The mother broke down in tears, saying, I thank you for what you're doing. And by the way, this program had to be paid for by the people that participated. If you were truly poor, you got a free ride. But if you had an indication of income, you were asked to pay a little something toward the cost of the program. And we had supervised daycare, basically, for those students, from the time school ended in three fifteen in the afternoon, until mom or dad could come by and pick the kids up and take them home. It was a roaring success, and I think today there's over thirty of these programs in Anchorage Elementary Schools, run, I think it's still run by Campfire, but I'm not sure. But it's been a tremendous success. So I'm not this hard-hearted person that just can't stand poor kids, but I also think that, you know, we're living in a world where we're fifteen and plus trillion dollars in debt, you know? How about a year from now, suddenly the federal government tells us we can't do this anymore? Are we going to be caught up in a program that we're going to have to come out of our budget, that I understand next year is going to be twenty-one million dollars in the hole, and have to pick up a half a million dollar tab? I mean, that's not reaching very far, in my opinion, to suggest that that couldn't happen. There's no guarantee on anything, and if the federal government decides that, you know, they got to start cutting somewhere, this could be a kind of a program that gets cut. And then suddenly, all of us sitting around this table are going to have to make a decision, God, can we find five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and whatever else it's going to cost to run the program? So, I, I just feel like I would like to narrow this down somehow, and I keep hearing, it's kind of like the free taxi service we provide students to go to their high schools from all over town, you know, to the tune of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Heck, I could solve that problem real quick if you just let me tell you, let's take the kids from Covenant House, all twelve of them, or fifteen of them, and let's take them to West, and give them one ride in one van, instead of hiring a taxicab, to take some child from, say, Mountain or Eagle River all the way out to South High School, because the law says, you know, you got to take them from where they're living now to where they used to live. And, you know, the price obviously just goes skyrocketing. And it's mandated, and we have no choice. We can't say no, we can't say, well, let us offer a little different program, let us initiate something a little differently that'll make the program do exactly what you guys want us to do, but not have to spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cabrides. I kind of sense that what Mike was just saying is that we don't have a lot of leeway, I guess. I mean, I don't see why we can't go in and truly, you know, I've heard from people in the various schools around town, that we basically give waivers away to kids with no validation.
Mr. Smith, the item on the table is boxed meals.
All right, well, this is kind of a waiver, but anyway, the idea that we don't, you know, we don't really check, and I think we got to start looking at some of these things, and maybe we need to talk to our congressional delegation about coming up with a sensible system that feeds poor kids, but doesn't feed the three kids that come from a family earning sixty-two thousand dollars a year. I mean, I'd be embarrassed to go and, and I don't have any kids in school anymore, I never ever asked for a program, they didn't need one, but I didn't, I don't think I made fifty or sixty thousand back in those days when my kids were little. And yet, we apparently have families that are accepting that kind of a program where they can, I don't know how they go to the school and ask for it even, but apparently they do. And, you know, it's like, I guess in closing, what do we do when Uncle Sugar decides that it's over? I mean, I can't believe that this administration's going to recommend the program be carried on if suddenly it were cut off and we were expected, I mean, I hope they wouldn't mandate it like they do the taxicab rides, but, you know, what do we do with, and I guess one final question I meant to ask, what is the dollar value of the free lunch, free breakfast, or partially paid-for lunch, breakfast, and now this program? Are we talking two million overall, are we talking one and a half million, or?
The department budget is approximately nineteen million dollars in two thousand and twelve thirteen, and I'm going to say that the federal reimbursement is between eighty and ninety percent of that.
We're getting eighty or ninety percent of nineteen million to feed homeless, and, not homeless, but.
We, our cash sales make up, I believe, less than a million dollars of our student nutrition budget.
Holy, good Lord. I'm shocked.
Well, and our utilization rate, as you suggested, is relatively low. So, most school districts of our size around the country receive quite a bit more federal free and reduced meal reimbursement.
Have we asked legally from our attorneys whether or not we could opt for a lesser program by volunteering and saying, we think this is too big, we would like to feed the seven percent poverty rate that we have in Anchorage, or the five point seven percent rate, or we'd like to bump it up a little bit to take care of this level of family, but we don't want it to go to sixty thousand. Can we have, do we have any leeway as a body to say, okay, we're willing to go along with a basic program, but we think the other end of it's too high, or are we stuck?
Madam President, Mr. Smith, we have not asked that question, and I would not recommend that we ask that question. What we're talking about this afternoon gets to be personal for some families and not so personal for others. I really respect the position you've taken on this. I would have to take a position that's a little different than that, because I understand to raise a family of, to raise a family with three children, and there's five adults, and it might appear that there's sixty-two thousand dollars there. When you start taking out the things that folks are responsible for, that number dwindles I think the answer to the question in my mind is we need to do a better job with food service to get more participation, which will help us provide more service for youngsters in the district. And this is a very simple request, because it's an after-school program, it's reimbursed by the federal government, and it provides youngsters that stay after school to get the childcare-type activities that you just described in nineteen seventy-eight that you championed. It's the same thing today that we're doing, the only difference is, we can apply for and get grants to help feed those youngsters that qualify. And I would submit to the board and to the public and to you, that while I respect that position, I have to arrow on the side of children on this one, that's consequently why the recommendation is what it is. The one question, though, that you asked, that I haven't had a chance to answer, is this one. If this or any other grant program goes away, would we maintain, would I come to you and ask you to maintain it? I have, I have made myself real clear around these things. If you get a grant, it stays while the grant is in place. If the grant isn't there, I don't believe in asking the district then to continue service that's not provided based on the grant that you receive. So, I can tell the board and anybody sitting out there that I would not be asking the taxpayers to bear that burden downstream if in fact the grant goes away. It's like many other food service-type grants that we have applied for and gotten received, and when they go away, so does that service.
Madam President, Chad helped me correct some of my numbers earlier. The annual budget's about eighteen million dollars this year, and about seventy-five percent of that is reimbursement. I apologize for the confusion.
I'm finished.
Tam. Yeah, a couple of questions. So, are these given to the students as they walk out the door and get on the bus, or are these only given to students who participate in the Twenty-First Century programs?
Madam President, these are just for the Twenty-First Century kids. They get this usually early on, sometimes right away as they start the Twenty-First Century program. And it's dispensed by the Twenty-First Century staff. So, it's just for the kids in Twenty-First Century, and it's generally served in the three-thirty to four timeframe.
Okay, so in a sense, it's an after-school snack as opposed to dinner?
Right, and that's what we have historically been providing in, for about the last ten or fifteen years, at various locations around the district. This is a more substantial meal, that's the only difference. It's a slightly larger portion, and it meets the new federal standards as if it was a school lunch. So, nutritionally, in terms of protein, fruits and vegetables, fat content, sodium, et cetera, it's the equivalent of a school lunch.
The new requirements?
The new school lunch requirement, that's correct.
Okay, and am I accurate in saying that other after-school programs, such as Campfire and other programs, PTA-run type programs, usually, if not always, offer an after-school snack?
That's my understanding, yes.
Additionally, I'm glad to hear about if the funding stops, that we wouldn't be asked to continue it, but I think that needs to be communicated on an annual basis, as we reapply every year for this, if it were to pass, that this is a current offering, but it's not etched in stone. I also want to ask that we be careful not to step on the toes of current school business partnerships that are also doing this type of program, lest we alienate members of our community who've already been working in this realm for a number of years. I'm very familiar with the one that Mountain View Elementary had going, where Walmart would grant money to Children's Lunchbox, who then worked with the Special Education Department at Bartlett, who packed food backpacks, who then delivered those to Mountain View Elementary School, and I believe it was the Leo Lyons Group that then did the distribution, although that was specific to food going home on weekends, on a Friday, and then coming back the backpack empty on Monday, so kids had something to eat over the weekends. But there are many opportunities for expansion of those type programs in our community, and for further collaboration with those agencies, those businesses that are in this business, so that they play a role, and maybe their niche is weekend, so there are, you know, because I'm aware there are kids that don't have any food on weekends either.
There's a lot of our schools that use the Backpack Buddy program, they're either internally supported or externally supported, as you've suggested, and there'd be no competition and no intent to compete with those types of providers.
Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, so since this is directly serving the children of the Twenty-First Century after-school program, could one of you please, for the benefit of the public, describe briefly that program and the children that it serves?
Madam Chair, I've got it in front of me if it's helpful, so do you?
I'd be happy to speak to the Twenty-First Century program. The Twenty-First Century program is essentially a federal grant that goes to the state, and then from there, the state puts it out for applicants. We've applied, we have three different grants that are site-specific with objectives from the Twenty-First Century program. The mission of the Twenty-First Century program centers around four elements. The first one is that it serves Title I students and families in a culturally responsive setting. They provide engaging academic, social, emotional learning activities, as well as cultural and recreational activities. And they empower students to soar academically, emotionally, as well as socially. It's offered currently to ten of our Title I elementary schools, one middle school, and one K-seven charter school. It serves approximately sixteen hundred students, and these locations were selected based on primarily need. The applications are renewed annually, we have them grouped into clusters. One of our grants goes to Mountain View, Taku, and Willow Crest, and that one started, actually starts September two thousand and twelve, and goes to May two thousand and seventeen. And the other one is for Muldoon, Tarmigan, Russian Jack, and Wonder Park, and that one started in September two thousand and nine, and will expire in May two thousand and fourteen. And then the third one is Fairview, North Star, Willowah, Begich, and Alaska Native Charter School, and that started in two thousand and eight, and that will end in two thousand and thirteen. Again, these are renewed each year. The grants range from about five hundred thousand per year to six hundred thousand per year. And one of the targets that we set with this program is that we have a much smaller adult-to-student ratio, so it could be from one to fifteen, all the way down to one to eleven students it's serving, one adult to eleven students. Funding also goes to support full-time coordinators at each school, a portion of the programs manager, program manager, the administrative assistant, and then added duty for teachers on after-school program staff. Many of our support people in the Twenty-First Century program are school staff members as well, so there's a strong connection with the student and the after-school support that they receive. We also have professional development that occurs, and that happens outside of the program hours. We have, I think, around a hundred and ninety-one total staff from the twelve thirteen school year, and sixty-one percent of those being teachers, as well as we have about twenty-seven percent are pair of professionals, and then fifteen percent being community members, to the like of college students or others. And I think for the twelve thirteen school year, we'll have about eighty-eight students enrolled per site. We had to cap our number of students because we want to maintain that ratio, and it's really dependent upon the funding amount that we receive. And then at our middle school, we'll have sixty-six at that location. And it's scheduled to run about one hundred and twenty days with students, so there's a calendar that is contingent upon the funding as well, the number of days they can support.
Great, thank you for that, because I don't think that probably most members of the public are familiar with what this after-school program is and who it serves, as aware of as we are anyway, so. Are there any further questions or comments on this memo? Tam?
Thank you for that information about Twenty-First Century. Question, have, in the past, prior to this pilot program, did the Twenty-First Century program ever provide this type of food? Does the grant allow food purchase in it?
There were portions of, I guess there was food provided prior to this, but as Mr. Abbott mentioned, the quality of what they're receiving now is significantly different. When you referenced other daycare providers or different programs after the school day, you know, it consists of whatever they can purchase in bulk, usually from.
Light snack.
From a warehouse.
And what was its nutritional value?
Whatever it said on the box.
So, it could have been Oreo cookies and a juice pack?
Probably not that degree, but I would say graham crackers, you know, juice packets, things of that nature that you would get at a wholesale kind of store.
Right. So, the nutritional value now is highly improved, is that accurate?
It's dramatically better in terms of its nutritional value, and it, as I said before, it fully complies with the new federal meal standards equivalent to a school lunch.
And the quantity is larger too, correct?
Yes.
And last but not least, I forgot to ask this earlier, can you speak a little bit about, we're actually going to make a profit on this program, and that's going to be used to increase. that's going to be used to increase or improve the nutritional value and aesthetic appeal of other foods across the district in the lunch program. Is that accurate?
Yeah, profit's probably the wrong term, and I apologize if I led people to believe that. But we do believe the revenues will exceed our expenses for this one piece of the student nutrition program. Every piece of the student nutrition program has its own economics. Some are successful, some are less so. As a blended entity, the department breaks even and actually makes a small contribution every year to their fund balance. At least that's been the historical trend. So this one narrow piece should net more money than it will cost us to provide. As I mentioned to Mr. Smith's questions earlier, because we can absorb the, if you will, the internal costs associated with the delivery, the warehousing, the paperwork associated with this, without adding extra people, we can really do this at a pretty good rate. And the reimbursement rate, the federal reimbursement rate, more than covers that. So when I say that it'll help us offset the program-wide higher standards, both the ones that have been set by the federal government and the ones that we're trying to impose on ourselves for serving more fresh food, presenting it in a more appealing and more attractive manner, so that we increase that meal participation that I said was one of our goals.
So potentially, we're giving higher quality, more quantity, even though quantity is sometimes an issue, and not costing us anything. But we haven't addressed at all, what are the cognitive benefits for the children who are receiving these meals in their, in the 21st century program? And many of them are working on classroom tasks or supplemental educational materials. So this is, can we just speak to the cognitive enhancements?
Well, I think the testimony that was provided tonight by the young man, who was a former student, is right on point. You know, you take any child, especially after spending six and a half hours in a school environment where they're engaged in activities, and then transition them to an after-school situation, they're going to need that replenishing of nourishment. And I think, again, the opportunity that we're creating on a consistent basis for these students, because they are going to be engaged, as you mentioned, in educational enrichment opportunities. In some cases, they're doing homework or finishing up activities that are going to carry through the evening, where as you go home, you don't have that structure, you don't have the, again, the nutritional value and what the meal's being prepared at home consistently. And so I think research is out there that you have to have your brain functioning on some energy and something that is nutrient-based and consistent is only going to play dividends.
Thank you. Natasha?
So the question that I want to ask is the cost in terms of, is the contract the one bidder that we got fixed for the year, meaning if and when the price of food goes up this year? Because apparently, not in Alaska, but in other places, it's hot and sunny, and food prices are expected to go up, so they say. In the mid-year in January, when the cost of corn and others skyrockets, how is that going to affect our bottom line?
It's a fixed-cost contract, so it's not to say the bidder did not take that into account and may have anticipated higher raw material costs, you know, fuel and other things associated with this as well. But we're paying, for the first year of the program, we're locked in at the price that we've quoted here.
So they eat it, so to speak?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. And so we're confident that this program will be financially successful based on the prices that we've got. And this is a vendor that we've worked with on, at many levels. We have complete confidence in their reliability, and yeah, I don't think they're going to try to change the pricing or anything else.
Mr. Higgins, did you have a comment?
Well, you know, I was hoping to pull it up on the computer, but I remember a couple of times I've heard this, that a lot of the nutrition in schools was kind of related from military thing, as far as the number of young men that were not qualifying for nutritional-related reasons and the like, but it dates back. Our job in the school district is to prepare kids for success in life. And I do want children to be entitled. I want them to be entitled to a nutritious life, I mean, to nutrition. I want them to be entitled to an education. I want them that are going from foster home to foster home to foster home to have transportation back to school and not have education so disrupted that they can't have a quality education and be successful. I think kids should be entitled to having a socially-emotional environment that's nurturing and supportive, and when you can't get it at home, I hope that we have that type of connection in teachers at school, and I know that teachers are trying to do that, and I applaud that. I want an entitlement mentality for children. We should have that. And I certainly don't want any parent out there who's struggling financially, I don't care what income they are, that they're entitled to get something for their kids to be embarrassed. I think that would be absolutely so unfortunate, that we do take this mindset. And I know that in elementary, our participation rate goes down as they go up, but the income issues aren't there, and it probably is tied to that. I've heard that before, to the embarrassment issues, and you know, more difficult for older kids. But this is something that every kid should be entitled to, is to have nutrition that's there. Like I said, the education, this is all linked together with our obligation for success in life. Everything here, teachers are doing it all the time, they're devoting more time, the social-emotional learning, we're leading the country in that area. I think our teachers are doing some fantastic stuff out there with that. I'm not, I guess this one really bothers me a little bit, you can, opposite side here, Don, but I feel like we have an obligation, and we have an obligation to do everything we can for these kids, and there are a lot of kids out there and families that are struggling. And they're not all married. In fact, most of them are single families out there that are struggling financially, and their cost associated with trying to raise these kids is even higher because of the lack of support within that group. So it's real difficult, and I don't know the financial situation of someone making more money. But to the degree that we can help with it, I think that's great. To the degree that this country has national problems on its debt, we're going to have to decide what a fair tax rate is, we're going to have to decide what's most important or not. But on the state constitution, the most important thing is education. And anytime you put aside the future generation, you've declared bankruptcy, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm not ready to declare bankruptcy in any way, shape, or form. I'm going to support the teachers out there that are doing so much work to help these kids, and I just, the idea that they're not getting a good nutrition all the time is just very disturbing to me. So I am totally in support of this, and I wish we could expand it even more. Thank you.
Ms. Guest?
Well, as usual, I'm somewhere between Pat and Don, in my opinions and physically, I guess, tonight. So I've thought a lot about this, and Ms. Higgins, I agree with you as a community member. Childhood hunger is a community issue. It's not necessarily just a school district issue, though. It's a community issue. But we have an obligation with our community assets to help solve this issue. And I've thought a lot about this. It might not be, and in the future, it could not be, us who runs that, and that's okay. I think the important part is that we're using our assets to help the community. And right now, our assets are the community buildings, which is community-funded, a program which the federal government's funding, which this community funded through its taxes, and the kids that happen to be in our building. And so I hope after, over the next couple of years, as we talk about food, which is a priority initiative, that we're going to talk about what is our role in childhood hunger. Our role is not to solve it. That's not our core mission. But our role is surely to be at the table, because all those kids are coming through our schools, and we have the community asset to leverage to help. In this case, I'm comfortable, only because I think we're doing a very fiscally sound, and this is where I might disagree with you, Mr. Smith, a very fiscally sound thing. We're taking excess capacity that no one else has in the community and applying it to try to help solve a community issue. That doesn't necessarily mean it's an ASD ownership issue in the long run, but surely is a community issue, and we have an obligation to be at the table. And if we have excess capacity in warehouse and human resources, and the kids are at our schools, I'm not sure why we wouldn't do it. So towards that, you know, Mr. Smith, when you were talking, I was, I have to say it's great not having the gavel, because I get to Google. And I've been thinking about this issue a lot. So a family of $28,000, $33,000, just a family of five in poverty, which is approximately $1,900 when you come home. I could find one three-bedroom apartment subsidized by Cook Linelet that's $1,000. I could only find two-bedroom apartments that are $1,200. That doesn't include utilities, it doesn't include gas, it doesn't include car insurance, it doesn't include health insurance, and it surely doesn't include food. And I think most of the community can recognize, if you're trying to have a family of five on $33,000, whether or not you can do it or not. It may sound like $62,000 is a lot of money. I mean, it is a lot of money for most folks, and in fact, it's more than half the people in this community make at this point. But if you think about it, and I challenge people to do the math, and I challenge them to create a budget on $3,600 a month, which is basically what that is in a take-home-pay environment, and pay your $300 a month for healthcare, and pay your utilities, and find a place to rent, and find insurance, and put gas in your tank. And you know what? Some folks can do it, and some folks are doing it now, but you're one disaster away. And so there are families out there that are making $62,000 and owe the healthcare system 50. Or their car breaks down. I mean, they're one disaster step away. So I think we have to be careful before we judge someone else's budget and really actually sit down and try to live and think through these budgetary items. A lot of folks can do it, and they do a great job, and we know that. But you also have to know that every home situation isn't ideal, and every expense situation isn't ideal. So I'm going to support this, but I do have a but. I am hoping, Jim, and staff going forward, that we're going to talk about the quality issue. So you knew it was coming from me, and it is now. I spent a lot of time, you can see my chicken scratch, on the nutritional value. I know we and my family are special, that we do food a little differently for our kids, but there's nowhere I would feed this to my children. And we need to have a higher quality. And it's fine that it's by the federal guidelines, but fruit punch is not a fruit. Having sodium as high as these are isn't acceptable to me. Having sugar as high is not acceptable to me. And honestly, having things, and we have to be careful because it might be their only meal at night, but I worry about meals that are 1,000 calories when pediatric guidelines are 1,500 for this age group. We've probably had them at breakfast and lunch, and they're leaving our system probably with 2,000 calories, and I'm not sure 2,000 good calories. And it's not anyone's fault, it's the evolution of the system, and I know our folks have done a great job of trying to reduce our risk, so we've gone to prepackaged, and we've done a lot of things over time for the right reasons. But I truly think it's time to move that ship and care what we're feeding kids, not just if we're feeding them as we move forward. So, thank you.
Ms. Plunkett?
I think everyone's brought up most of my concerns and my ideas, but I just kind of wanted to concentrate on a couple that weren't mentioned. And I can see in the future, United Way or one of its agencies playing a bigger role in this. But absolutely, if I look at the children that are in the 21st century programs, I mean, they have to qualify to be accepted for that program as well, within each of our lower-income schools, where the need is really there. But I would definitely echo, in addition to what Ms. Guest said, that the support mechanism that our poorer families have is not always as good as it needs to be, and it only takes during the winter one incident with a vehicle to potentially cause an even bigger issue with income and a person even being able to make a living and pay for what they do have. So I mean, I do believe that this is a good program for our kids, but I think there are some other things we can look forward for the future that might be able to handle it a little bit differently and still accomplish the same thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Well, in closing, I'm sorry, I'm not going to vote for this, because I think the parameters are way, way too high. If we're talking about poverty, if we're going to be talking about, you know, the needy, the people that really can't make it in Anchorage society on $5,500 a month, there has to be some way of having a threshold. And I'm sorry, it's just not, I mean, we always cringe at the thought that we're going to be looking at somebody and criticizing, but I tell you, a $65,000 salary, I mean, I hope there's not very many doing it, and I'm guessing maybe there aren't. But when we've got to have a program that sets a parameter, that the parameter's that high, I'm sorry, I can't support it. And I have a history of being supportive of this kind of program, but this one doesn't smell right to me, and I'm not going to vote for it.
I appreciate Gretchen's comments about the quality of what we're offering. That's the issue that I have with this. Unfortunately, in order to participate in the National School Lunch Program, some of the things that we have available to us in order to make these programs work are not good quality, and it's unfortunate that it's what we're serving to our most vulnerable people, our kids. But I am going to support this memo tonight, and if there's no further comment from board members, I think we're ready for a vote. Wait, 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 wait. We have really funky buttons up here, they're very old.
Want us to re-vote?
Yes. And the motion passes 6 to 1. That brings us to the end of our consent agenda, and I don't know if there's anything on the superintendent's report that we need to discuss. I don't think so. So that brings us down to school board comments and communications, and I apologize, I meant to make some announcements under announcements, which was at the beginning of our agenda, and I just, I didn't do it. So I'm going to make a few comments now. First of all, even though it seems like Dr. Browder has been here for a long time to us, he's been here working very hard every day since April. To others, this is his first meeting, and I want to welcome you, Dr. Browder. We're happy to have you. Welcome to your first official board meeting. We do have a lot of changes that I'm sure are visible to people. The board talked, I think, in the spring about some things that we wanted to do differently. One of those is we no longer will be having our early meeting at 4:30 PM. We will be starting our early meetings at 2:30 PM instead. This is for, one of the reasons we feel that it's more efficient use of our time, staff's time, other people in the community who may not want to stay in the boardroom until 11 or 12 at night, which we've been known to do. And we hope that some of those issues, we will be able to take up during our 2:30 meeting. The other big change is our early meetings in the past were not televised. We will be televising our 2:30 meetings, and we think that's a great change. You can stay home and watch, if you prefer, and have the benefit of being, of listening to a lot of the discussions. I will make note, though, that we are not taking any action at the 2:30 meetings. Only action items will happen at the 6:30 meeting, just as in the past. The other change you'll see is we've reconfigured the boardroom somewhat, and to all the folks that were involved in that, good job, it's come together really nice, I believe. We will no longer have staff sitting on either side. We'll have the superintendent and his direct reports now will be facing each other, and we believe that is going to provide for some better... And we believe that is going to provide for some better dialogue amongst each other. Again, at the 2:30 meeting, no action items that will be kind of set aside for committee reports, presentations, and other things that we have normally had to set aside special meetings for or work sessions. So we will not totally be able to eliminate those, but hopefully a great deal of them. And we'll be able to take care of those at 2:30. So unless I've missed anything, anybody want to add? Tam?
Maybe I'm jumping the gun, but I do believe the communications announced that in the future, you'll be able to livestream the meetings, which for those who have a lot of data capabilities will be a very welcome thing. You can watch us on your iPhone.
Absolutely. Thanks for making that note. So with that, are there any other comments from board members or communications from staff? Don?
Madam President, I would appreciate it, and for the most part, it's done pretty well. But if, some of these memos, if the acronyms could be at the beginning of the first paragraph or something, and I don't care, then you can call it the JPWXYZ. But I get confused once in a while when I read about something, and then I got to dig and dig and dig to try to figure out what it is, and appreciate that. Just be helpful.
That's not a problem. Great suggestion, Mr. Smith.
Janie?
Pat?
One of the other things we've done in the past is try to make sure that board members, as well as administration, that we try not to use those when we're talking, because the audience hearing it and people on TV, they don't, I just use SEL, Social Emotional Learning, so I guess I'm in that ballpark. But not everybody's going to know ELL and SEL and all those different things. And it leaves the audience out of it unless you're in the education field. So it's also good for us. Thank you.
So we will continue to refine our process. I'm sure there'll be some bumps in the road with the changes that we've made so far. And hopefully, things will work out to be better in the end. So I do not think we have any more items for executive session this evening. So that brings us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We are adjourned.